Okay, let's call this meeting to order. We'll start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Director Sisanya, Director Cross.
Here.
Director Hubbard.
Present.
Vice President Forkway.
Here.
President Womack.
Present. All right, we are here to talk about the Sunnyside School community survey results. So, welcome to our special meeting. Ron will take it away.
Yeah, we'll take it away here. Just really quick, we do have Miranda Everett from our consultant FM3 that is going to provide the presentation. Just real quick, for folks that aren't familiar, back in July of 2025, staff engaged professional public opinion firm FM3 to conduct a community survey to gauge the support for a ballot initiative to establish the park and rec property tax. The survey was conducted between August 18th and August 31st. And with that, Miranda, I'll go ahead and stop my share, and if you want to share your screen, we can get underway.
Great, thanks so much. Sharing my screen here. Okay, so my name is Miranda Everett. I'm a partner at FM3 Research. We're a public opinion research and strategy firm based in the Bay Area, LA, and Portland, Oregon. Here to deliver findings of the recent survey. Just before I dive into the details, want to give kind of a high level summary. We found that voters in the Los Osos area are are strongly supportive of a measure, and that's at the threshold that would be required for a citizens initiative, which is a simple majority. We see that they are certainly interested in protecting open space in the heart of Los Osos. And they also apply a lot of value to providing additional opportunities for seniors' families and children to play and exercise and just get out there in their community. So I will next dive into the survey results, starting with our methodology. So as mentioned, this was conducted through the latter half of August, the 18th through 31st, using a dual mode approach. That means we used cellphone calls, landline calls, emails, and text messages to get ahold of folks. We were able to reach 354 folks in that way. This is a random and representative sample of likely voters in Los Osos. So we were not contacting everyone in the community, but just a random and representative set. And this was conducted in both English and Spanish. So starting big picture, we asked some folks how they feel about some different organizations active in public life. And you can see here that they really value their parks and their parks districts. Ninety-two percent have a favorable view of the California State Park system. Seventy-nine percent have a favorable view of the county park system. And sixty-four percent have a favorable view of their local school district. When it comes to the CSD here that I'm presenting to tonight, sixty-four percent had a favorable view. Relatively, most of those folks are in the somewhat favorable category. And then when it comes to the Community Advisory Council, there's a greater share of folks who haven't heard the name, or maybe have heard the name but don't have a strong opinion about them either way. Looking at the folks with a view at all, it's much more favorable than unfavorable by a two to one margin. We also asked folks in their personal opinion, you know, not specific to a ballot measure mechanism or particular ways it might be funded, but just generally, do they see a need for funding for parks and active recreational space in the community? You can see seventy-six percent saw at least some need for additional funding in the community. And forty-seven percent, nearly half, see a great need for additional funding for parks and active recreational space. That is quite a high number in my experience and something that is really a good figure to have in alignment with the ballot measure question itself. So let's turn to that. We gave folks, as you can see in the blue box, the seventy-five-word ballot measure language that they may see on their ballot. Lots of legalese, kind of a run-on sentence, but that's how it's required to be written in the state. And based on just that information, we see sixty-three percent say they would vote yes. Forty-two percent say they would definitely vote yes, and just twenty-nine percent say they would vote no on the measure. So that is more than three in five support for a measure that, if it were placed as a citizens initiative, would require a fifty percent plus one margin for passage, given the margin of error of the survey. That's a really great place to be starting, well above that fifty percent plus one needed, just given the ballot measure language alone. Now, looking at this by some key demographics, you can see seven in ten voters under fifty support the measure. Majorities of seniors supported, majorities of men and women. All of this well above the fifty percent plus one needed for passage across gender and age dynamics in the community. Looking at this by party and political ideology, you can see strong support from Democratic and independent voters in the city, which is in the town, which is the bulk of voters. It's more than seventy percent voters in the town. Fifty-six percent of Republicans oppose the measure, and they make up about a quarter of the electorate in the town. When we asked folks who said they would vote yes, why they would vote yes, they provided an answer in a few words of their own. Thirty-three percent said they were excited by the idea of increased park areas or recreation space. Twenty-six percent said something having to do with the community's growth and their desire to support quality of life as the community grows. Then you can see a smattering of other responses, keeping open space, having family-oriented or child-friendly activities, and the relatively minimal expense of the measure. You can see a few examples of things people said in their own words on this slide. Los Osos needs more community spaces. The area youth need things to do. With so many federally funded items being taken away, it's important to have something close to home. Just a variety of different comments that folks shared with us. On the other hand, among the twenty-nine percent who were opposed to the measure, most of those objected to new taxes. They just feel that they're not willing to pay additional taxes, sort of no matter what it's for. That's not uncommon for us to see, especially these days. There are a set of voters for whom it's a matter of principle to oppose new taxes when they're on the ballot. And you can see some examples of things people said in their own words on this slide here. Lots of people talking about their property tax bills, or the sense that there might be already enough perks nearby. Next, we provided folks a short description of what the measure would do. The idea here was to give sort of neutral description that might appear in the voter's pamphlet or in a local newspaper article, just kind of describing, the Sunnyside School closed in 2002. This would allow the CSD to purchase the land for active recreation and parks and playgrounds, and then reminding them what that might cost, which would be fifteen dollars per month for the average homeowner for fifteen years, and then eight dollars per month after that. With this information, you can see that support lifts from sixty-three percent yes to sixty-eight percent yes. So this clarification is helpful at building support. We're well above that fifty percent margin needed for passage. And notably, our definitely yes share moves from forty-two percent to forty-six percent. So nearly half saying they would definitely vote yes on this measure, given that information provided on the last slide. So next, turning to voter priorities, the things they value the most and want to see reflected in the measure. The way we structured this question is to ask people how important these different priorities would be to them. Extremely important, very important, somewhat important, or not too important. And anything in a shade of blue is at least somewhat important to voters in your community. And you can see that includes ninety percent or more of everything on this slide. So we like to look a little more specifically at the things valued as extremely or very important, which is what they're ranked, as you can see down the right-hand side. The things that really stand out for folks, preserving open space in the heart of Los Osos. So preserving that open space is key. Providing a playground accessible for children for all abilities. That's something that really stood out to folks. Planting trees that help protect air quality, something that forty percent called extremely important at the very top of the scale. And then you can see a variety of other things that people also widely valued. Space for recreation programs for youth, active recreation more generally, park access for people with disabilities, and space for recreation programs for seniors. So things that really focus on the types of people who might be using the space that really make more concrete and more clear, and help people picture who's going to be using the space. Moving down the list a bit more, you can see people also value, majorities of people also value creating pollinator habitat, walking trails, youth baseball, softball, and soccer fields, and preventing commercial development in the heart of Los Osos. Although we saw, we split sampled that one, so that half heard preventing commercial development and half heard preserving open space, and preserving open space was more popular. So that's two different ways of phrasing sort of the same concept, and we saw that the latter was really resonated. Things that are less intense priorities include pickleball and tennis, as well as a dog park or an urban community garden. In those cases, there are greater shares of folks who say that's not too important to them. We also asked folks to step back a little bit and think about their willingness to pay different amounts per month per household for the measure. We asked them about twenty dollars, eighteen, and fifteen dollars. And you can see broad majorities are willing to support the park and recreation measure at as much as twenty dollars per month, fifty-eight percent. Their stronger, very willingness, when you get down to fifteen dollars per month at that lower amount that they'd be paying several years into the measure. But you can see even at the twenty dollars per month level, willingness is there, and it's quite broad. So next, we wanted to provide some information for voters to help them sort of understand reasons people might vote yes, reasons people might vote no, just to look at how sort of sticky their opinions were. Whether, you know, a strong campaign in favor from the local community would be helpful, whether naysayers might move them away from support, just to see how viable the measure might be in a future election. And here you can see for the measure hovers well above the margin of error needed for passage. It kind of hovers around two-thirds, which is well above the margin needed for passage. Sixty-three percent initially, the high point of sixty-eight percent after that information that we showed you earlier, and then no lower than where it began, at sixty-four percent, even after some negative messaging was provided to folks. So lots of words on this slide. These are the messages that folks found the most compelling in order. At the top of the slide are the things that broader shares saw as a very convincing reason to vote yes on the measure. So fifty-four percent of voters told us that the growth message, this idea that nature and parks should be part of every community, and we need to protect that even as our region grows, that was for forty, fifty-four percent of voters, a very convincing reason to vote yes. This idea of protecting the land forever as parks and open space, ensuring it's never developed, and that we would have beautiful views and wildlife habitat for all, fifty-one percent found that persuasive. Forty-nine percent found the heart of town message persuasive, this idea that we would have a new park and playground in the heart of Los Osos, where currently there are a few places to play and to gather. The county message, the one saying the funding from this measure would go to the CSD and not the county. That means that Los Osos can remain in control of how the funds are spent. That sort of local control message is something we've been seeing in more and more communities, is especially important, and really did seem to resonate here. So a variety of different ways to talk about the measure that really resonate with your voters, and that helped lead to that support being around two-thirds. You can see the shares of folks who either called each message very convincing or somewhat convincing. You can see here again, broad shares of folks kind of finding all of these messages a good reason to vote yes, especially the idea that we could preserve open space in the heart of town as the area grows, and the messages that kind of center the types of folks who would benefit, families, youth, seniors, people with disabilities. We also tested some negative messages, wanted to look at what the other side of the coin might tell us. The cost of living message, as we've been seeing in lots of our research lately, was at the very top of the list. Thirty-one percent called that very convincing. One thing you'll notice is those numbers running down the left-hand side are lower than they were for the positive messages. So that means that the negative messages aren't really getting as much traction as the negative messages are. Those are just less persuasive, as you can see. And then the idea that local government might waste the funds, that's in sort of a second tier, along with the idea that we have higher priorities than a park right now. Those fell relatively flat, as you can see on this slide. It's really the cost of living that is something that gives people at least a little bit of pause. But as we mentioned before, the support for the measure, even after these negative messages, was still around two-thirds. So well above the margin needed for a citizens initiative. So just to sum it up, citizens initiative measure to create a new park and active recreation space in Los Osos is viable in a future election, especially if it has the support of a strong, positive, and local campaign, and especially if we can expect stable or steady economic conditions. We see a great need for funding for new parks and active recreation space, serving the community among folks in principle. And we see two-thirds support the measure based on ballot measure language alone. And even more do so after a brief plain language explanation of what it would fund and what it would cost. That is well above the simple majority needed for a citizens initiative under current law. Broad shares are also saying they would definitely vote yes on the measure, which is a good indicator for us, not just the leaning toward yes, but definitely there. And then we saw the chief challenge that this measure might face is voters concerned about the cost of living. We did see positive messaging is stronger, and it lifts support for the measure. So there's limited evidence that the negative messaging would move people away, but that's something to keep an eye on. Voters' priorities for more measure spending include preserving open space in the heart of Los Osos, adding trees, and an all-abilities playground. You may consider revising measure language to highlight those projects if you'd like, but the measure as tested performed quite well. Really positive and important messaging for folks is this opportunity that they have now to protect the land in the heart of Los Osos and use that land for the whole community to share. So we should also make sure that messaging and information that gets out to folks really focuses on the benefit for children and for families. So that's a lot of information in a short time, but I'm happy to take questions.
Excellent. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Miranda? All right, should we take, see if there's any questions from the public? All right, stick with us, and let me open this item up for public comment.
If you're online, please raise your hand, and if you're in the boardroom, please come to the podium. Would you like to take online or in-person first?
Let's take in-person first.
Okay.
Yes, good evening, board. My name is Jeff Edwards. I'm a fifty-year resident of Los Osos. And I have to say, this survey, Julie took the survey, and I've read the survey script. These are induced responses. Who doesn't want more open space and parks? They're not honest, and it's an invalid survey, I would submit to you. Moreover, there's no mention of the fact that this ballot measure would not include one penny for any improvements. So how would the all-abilities playground, sports fields, facilities for seniors, families, and youth? How would all that be built? We're talking millions, ten million minimum, probably more. So really, you're misleading. This survey's misleading the community. You're misleading the community. The survey doesn't mention fire once, or fire tax, and there's no mention. So it's this focus on a parks and rec tax for open space. Does anybody know about the Habitat Conservation Plan in Los Osos? The thousand-plus acres that were creating a green belt around the community for pollinators, for habitat pollinators? That's what we're doing. The concept for Los Osos is greenbelt on the outside and the periphery, urban development in the core. If you were serious about parks and rec, you'd go buy the gray property on Pismo and South Bay. Seven acres, it's flat, if you were really serious, but I don't think you are. I really, I don't know why you press on. I suggest to you, you drop this idea immediately. Drop it right now. This community cannot afford two hundred dollars or two hundred and fifty dollars per parcel per year on top of a fire tax increase. It's beyond belief. As a board member, if you continue to support this and move forward, you either don't get it, or you're just irresponsible, one or the other. It's clear. So to rely on this survey to move forward in any regard, I just don't get it. Where's the money? You need a strong campaign. That's what you were told. Need a strong campaign. Where's the money coming for that? There is no money. You can't participate in that. Then you're going to need sixty-six percent. If you get the signatures, you have no money for a campaign. You have no money to option the property, which is what the school district wants you to do. You have no money, and you can't tax us anymore.
Anyone else in the boardroom?
Hi, I'm Gary Freiberg. After the last town hall, I formed By Sunnyside School, and we've done a couple of things. One of them was, along with Dr. Wanda, and I'm losing her last name, and Karen, excuse me, Kathy Mills, we looked into government programs, grants, and corporate funding to take care of improvements. And what we'll do is, I think the survey has been very, very helpful to ascertain what the priority should be. But then there's matching sources of funds for it. An example, just using it as an example, with sports fields. So we go to Dick's Sporting's Good, we go to Big Five, we go to Related, and these corporations have existing benevolent programs for communities. It's just that in this process, as we're moving along, right now, excuse me, it's not the time to implement any of these things. But we're setting it up, and I'm hoping after the second town hall to be able to form a volunteer group and start looking into the details of, I think the all-accessible playground is absolutely wonderful. But the thing that I want to end with is that we live in such a beautiful place because of our forefathers, the decisions that they made. As you may know, one guy wanted to build a restaurant on top of Morro Bay Rock, and fortunately, they didn't do that. And so where we live and the beauty that we enjoy is because of the land use decisions of prior administrations, prior community leaders. And I think in my humble opinion, that's now the mantle is us. It's our turn to be the steward in what kind of decision that we make, not just for today, but we're looking ahead for the future, for future generations, for families. And I think as things get tighter, people need to have a place where they can be with family, where they can take their kids. And to have a large place of open space in our community fits Los Osos. I think Crest Inlet has proven what this community can do in coming together, and I think that we'll be able to do that. Maybe not at the same time. It might take time. But we're also not going to be out there without any direction or any ability to implement anything. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Richard Margerson. I have a little experience in political polling, but I guess my question's at the beginning. This is at the beginning of a process. Total interviews, three fifty-four. I didn't see in here, maybe I missed it. How many contacts were made? And that's the first question. And then the measure language. There's nothing in here indicating over the fifteen years, if it's fifteen dollars per parcel, about any cost of living increases, and what that could eventually, because I actually think after fifteen years, the operations and maintenance is going to be more than six hundred and two thousand, two hundred, because that's part of the one point one four million now. And then I was a little concerned about the demographics of the division of the political parties that responded, and that only two percent of the respondents were Spanish-speaking. Because I believe the last census indicated a higher number in this community.
Oh, do you want to answer, Miranda? How many contacts?
Should we finish?
There was a question. I guess it's also turning into public comment, but thanks for bearing with us.
Sure. So we contacted around, pulling up my notes here, around nine thousand households, which is almost every voter in the city. There are just some folks who don't take our calls, which is why we have to be diligent, and it took us two weeks to get the results. But often, for every completed, successful call, or text, or email, we do have to contact several other people. So that's very, very common in our industry. And then to the question of language, about seven percent of registered voters, likely voters in the city, are Latino, and not all of them are monolingual Spanish speakers, although we did offer the survey in Spanish and had bilingual interviewers for the folks who are more comfortable taking it in Spanish. So we were comfortable with having that level of response in Spanish language.
Perfect. Thank you. Do we have any more questions in the boardroom or comments? All right, I'm going to open it up for those that are online, then.
All right, Barbara, you just have to unmute yourself.
Hey, is this, okay, Barbara Rosenthal here. I was curious why the buildings were not addressed in any of the uses of the space, because we have a lot of buildings there that are serving people. And I think the community would want to think about how they might use those buildings, as well as the open space.
Thank you.
Is that all, Barbara?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I have one. That's it for online, but I do have one written in. Can I read that?
Yes, please.
All right. This is from Patrick McGimney, Chair of the Los Osos Community Sustainability Group. I would like to present this, though. The survey showed that a majority of residents believe Los Osos needs more park and open space, and that Sunnyside School could afford this by converting it into a community park. The majority would vote to pass a two-eighteen vote and put an additional fifteen dollars per month on their property tax bill to make this happen. But sixty percent of the residents thought the cost of living in Los Osos was out of control, and the last thing they need was higher taxes. The cost of living in Los Osos is going to go up. Our fire tax is about to explode, and the cost of water will drown many of our residents and wash them out of town. The first question on the survey should have been, the primary need for Los Osos is for, one, sustainable water supply, two, more growth, three, or a park. The vast majority would say we need a sustainable water supply, which we do not have, and it's going to cost this community a lot to have one. Maybe giving ourselves higher taxes for a park is a little premature until we know if we can afford a sustainable water supply. It's going to cost eight to ten million at today's dollars to get that inner tide built, and it's the cost of state water. It will take more than the estimated two hundred acre feet per year of state water to make our basin sustainable. But even at that, according to the Los Osos Basin Plan, it would cost us an additional three hundred and thirty-seven thousand per year for that water. And that was the cost fifteen years ago. Sunnyside School will not get developed, one way or another, until there is water to do so. Even a park will need a lot of water. Let's wait on the two-eighteen vote until we know what other expenses are coming our way, and if we'll have enough water even for the survival of our community. Thanks for your consideration. And that is it for online public comment.
All right. Thanks, Laura. All right, I will bring us back to the board. Do you want to answer, address anything, Ron, or?
There was the question by Barbara regarding the building use. It was mentioned, it's a little buried in one of the questions or one of the bullet slides, wasn't it, Miranda, in terms of uses for seniors and other things? But it wasn't explicitly laid out, because our focus right now is acquisition and ongoing operation and maintenance. The use of those buildings, if we are successful in acquiring, would come at a later date, and we would want public input on how we use those buildings.
Thank you.
What percentage of them now are used by the Waldorf School?
Percentage?
I mean, is it half the buildings there?
No, there's quite a bit of space up there. They've indicated they'd like to expand into a few more of the classrooms and actually have an office, which there's room for that. But it's all in that one section that runs kind of east-west over on the east side of the campus. But there's a lot of space where Cal Fire was.
Right.
Going back, and there's even more space behind that. Actually, probably two facilities, two more buildings in the back there. One is a modular that needs to be moved. It's not worthy of supporting anything.
Moved or torn down?
Yeah, taken out.
Oh, removed.
Removed, I should say.
So there's room for the school to expand even, and then still have?
Right, and then there's also the auditorium.
Right. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Do we have any more questions for Miranda, or should we let her go?
That's up to you.
Anyone? All right. Miranda, thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Miranda.
My pleasure. Thanks so much.
Okay, we can discuss more among ourselves.
What direction does staff on next steps? What do we expect those to be?
Well, from tonight, you know, we have the information that we'd been waiting for in terms of the survey. So, you know, of course, we've got to digest that, or the board needs to digest that and come to terms on, do we want to continue to move forward? If that's the decision, then we need to engage the school district very, very soon in terms of outlining a proposal that they might accept. Because then we have the citizens group out in the wings. We have the town hall meeting Saturday, which is going to lay out, I'll do a convinced version of the survey for the public. And then the citizens group has a robust agenda to inform people of what the next steps are from their perspective, which would be the ballot initiative. And we do have a couple of people here, Tom Muir and Debra Howe from that group, that if you have any specific questions, they've got a timeline. But it's really up to the board to decide if we're ready to keep moving forward.
I guess I'm curious about how our next steps dovetail with their next steps, because we, you know, we're not the lead, and yet we are.
Well, we're the lead in terms of, if you were to say tonight, no, this doesn't look like something the community wants, or we don't feel like it's fiscally responsible, or whatever reason, the board would need to make that decision, so we're not continuing the parallel effort with citizens group. Because they have a tight timeline to get the ballot initiative, notice of intent, and then get that approved, and then get out and collect signatures, and then keep that process moving forward.
Can we hear a little bit more about the public initiative, the details on that?
What kind of details?
Like, if we were to decide to move forward, what are their next steps? How many signatures are they going to need, and all that?
I can help out, but Tom or Debra, you know, definitely help. It's 10% for signatures. It's 10% of registered voters, which is a little bit over 1,000. I think it was 1,032 signatures. Of course, they would want to collect more to make sure they have enough for valid, you know, to check on the validity of those signatures. That needs to happen, or start in October, I believe. I don't know if there's a drop-dead date for the notice of intent. That's definitely the next thing that needs to happen. Plus, the ballot measure language needs to be finalized. And then when is, you'd have to, when do the signatures have to be submitted? I forget that date.
January 20 would probably be a good target date, early in February.
So into January, early February, for those that couldn't hear that over.
Do they have a, what is their infrastructure for getting the signatures? If they have any, if that's been discussed yet, planned yet?
Volunteers. The core group is very well organized. And from that core group, they have reached out to a lot of stakeholder groups, including youth sports leagues. There's Los Osos Valley Garden Club. There's an array of stakeholders that would agree to volunteer. That is one of the, the recruitment of volunteers is going to be critical. And it's very critical that they're trained properly on the method to get signatures, because it's very specific on how that is done and how the sheets are filled out.
All right, and one last question, I think, for you now. If we move forward now, what are our next steps as a board? And at what point do we let the community initiative take?
Well, like I said, yeah, the key here is for us, the CSD, to engage the school district with a proposal that is along the lines, what you've been hearing, this $185 a year based on the breakout for O&amp;M and acquisition. So that's the key on our side. I believe the citizens group will keep moving forward until there is either a hard stop, because we can't come to agreement, or in the negotiations with the school. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom or Debra, they're going to continue moving forward until there's something that determines otherwise. But basically, because it's a citizens initiative, once the district has negotiated, say, and successfully negotiated, and we're ready to move forward, we need to separate. We cannot become advocates for the project or opponents. You know, we need to stay neutral. We're able to present factual information based on the actions that we've taken as a board, as the district. But the citizens initiative has to remain independent.
Awesome. Thank you.
So we're still in negotiations with the school district?
Correct.
Do we have any idea how long that's going to go on?
Well, I have a call set up for tomorrow morning with Ryan Pinkerton, their deputy superintendent over operations. And my intent, depending on the outcome from tonight, is to either engage soon. I mean, because they're anxious to get this resolved one way or another. And so any proposal we provide to them, I think they would move quickly. If at the staff level, or at Ryan Pinkerton, or there's ad hoc subcommittee from the trustees, they'll move that quickly. Because again, on the initiative side, there is a timeline and some deadlines that have to be met.
Do we know if they're interested in holding the note for us, or?
We don't have any indication at this point in time.
So the negotiation obviously is contingent upon the successful initiative?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, we can't commit to anything without that.
Correct.
School district's willing to play along with that, so they're not going to really have a resolution until June, except that we have a framework.
Correct.
I think that's why we have this survey, right? We're playing a game of certainty and uncertainty between us and the school district and citizens group. So this was a good first step, I think. To me, I think it looks pretty clear that there's some pretty broad support for this in the community, which kind of echoes what I've been seeing and hearing. I mean, not only is this saying what we all know, is that we need more park space, park and open space, but it's also saying that almost a supermajority are willing to pay for it. So in my opinion, I think the citizen, excuse me? No. It's not going to be a back and forth, Mr. Edwards.
This is our meeting.
Like I was saying, my opinion is that there's a strong citizens group that wants to put this on the ballot, and I think the voters of Los Osos should decide if they want this or they don't want this.
Well, I totally agree. I do think, and I'm glad that we're hearing about fire tax. I think people need to be fully informed about everything that's coming before them, because we do have some heavy lifts coming up with the inner tie. And so much of it is going to be dependent upon outside funding, grant funding, to really make Sunnyside into something other than it is. But the first steps have to be taken.
Right.
But I do, I do want a wide discussion about all the issues. And that's happening, so. Good, everybody pay attention, and I'm looking forward to the town hall, because I can't imagine what it's like to try and put together citizens initiative. But we'll find out.
I have to say, it's a great group, very organized.
And they've put a lot of work into it already. It's pretty impressive.
Well, amazing things have happened in this community in the past because of citizens initiatives and efforts and all of that, so it can happen.
My concern is, will the tide turn a bit after the town hall meeting when we throw in, or it's thrown in, that information about the fire tax and the water and all that? Do you think that will, that will possibly make this report a little less rosy? Or does that, you know, does that matter? Yeah, I know it matters, but.
No, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I definitely want us to be very transparent about the costs coming up to the community, so this isn't siloed into just a parks and rec type of issue. But I think Matthew said it the right way, is that we provide the information, and it's up to the community to decide.
Absolutely. And by the time the decision is made in June, there'll be a lot of information about fire tax. And the unfortunate part is that it takes a lot of effort to get to June. It would be nice to have some certainty along the way, but certainty is just not something that we're ever guaranteed about anything. So I, I don't see how we can stand in the way of the community. And from what I've seen, it's positive. They want to move forward.
And Quest Inlet was a really good example of the community coming together and, you know, coming up with that money. I mean, that just didn't happen overnight. It took a really big effort to get that done, and they did it. And again, proves that the citizens coming together, they can, you know, they can determine their own destiny.
I understand that people are price-sensitive, but I think we can afford both the fire tax and the park tax. I mean, my monthly chocolate budget is more than $20.
I just don't, I don't think, I just want to make sure it's just really clear. I mean, we're not making this choice. We're not choosing to do this.
Right.
We're saving.
That's Kennedy's choice.
Let's get some information and see if there's support out there. I'm not sure what other kind of report we could get that could be more positive, really, as far as just moving forward, spending some of our Parks and Rec fund on setting up this ballot, or because we're going to have to start paying for an election for this. But ultimately, this is not this board's decision.
Right.
I mean, we're choosing to go along with something that we vetted with a professional company. And we can argue about questions and pieces of it, but there's definitely support there.
I agree with you, but I think my point is, we can walk and chug gum. We can do two things, that one doesn't preclude the other. And it, it is absolutely, the community decides.
Exactly. That's the bottom line, is that, you know, we can think about individually what, where we would cut our budgets, but it's a community decision, and we need to support the community.
All right. Well, you're kind of out of order. I would love, would have loved to have heard your comment.
Have a proper public comment outside of the questions for the pollster?
It was kind of all combined in general action item two.
Sorry. Go, go stand up there next time. All right, do I hear a motion or recommendation?
Well, I'm thinking, like we've been saying, you know, it's our job to put the initiative out there, or at least to keep on, keep on keeping on, basically. And this, this report warrants us saying, yeah, let's, let's keep it going and let the voters decide.
So I guess the direction you're looking for is to continue negotiations with the school district?
Correct.
Well, really, it's, it's to start negotiations with the school district in a meaningful way. So I think the direction is more along the lines of presenting the potential ballot measure and those parameters to the school district and try to obtain, I mean, what we need, right, is, is, and hope is that they'll carry the paper on it. It's what we're hoping they're going to do. So I think it's more like have the GM and legal counsel present that to the school district and negotiate in good faith.
Is that a good enough direction?
If we're going to just take a straw poll for consensus?
I agree with Matt.
Does everyone agree with the direction that we've discussed?
Absolutely. I agree.
Yes, I agree too.
Right.
Right.
And we need to plug the town hall meeting that's in a few days. So for that, I would like, if Deb and Tom could talk about that.
Yes.
Oh, there. Okay.
Good idea.
We scooted you in.
Well, thanks. Thank you for that. Debra Howe, very involved with this citizens initiative. And as you've already discussed, we're moving on two tracks. The CSD is moving along on their track, which is to take up the negotiations with the school district, make the best deal that you can make within the parameters that we've set out for ourselves. Meanwhile, over here, the citizens are organizing themselves to make this a reality. Collecting the signatures is our first big thing that we have to do. And so tomorrow's town hall will be explaining where we are and how we got here, and finding out who wants to volunteer to participate in this effort to educate and collect signatures and get, you know, more than the number of signatures we need. And that really starts the ball rolling with the county in terms of getting us on the ballot. And all of these things have to be done in a certain timeline in order for us to appear on the June 2026 primary. So we're, we're on, we're on track. We're, this town hall tomorrow will essentially be the kickoff campaign. We hope you guys get this negotiation done quickly. I'm sure the school district is interested in that as well. But we're going to keep moving down our track and accomplishing what we need to do. And then Gary is taking up the improvements, and he's going to work on his third rail, which is to go out and seek funding. So there are actual concrete improvements, but we're looking at minimal things to begin with. So, you know, just setting that aside, first, we have to get it. And I agree with Chuck that we do need to have that CPI. We need to have where there is an increase over time for inflation, because it would make, wouldn't make much sense not to have something like that in there.
Can you tell us where and when, and I don't know what?
Saturday at the community center on Palisades from 3 to 5.
AM?
No, don't come in the AM.
You go it.
But you can come at two and help us set up chairs if you'd like. But you can come at two and help us set up chairs if you'd like. No, from three to five.
They've done a great job on social media, it's, it's out there on both Facebook and Nextdoor. And then it's gone out to the stakeholder groups that I mentioned.
Gone out to Waldorf, it's gone out to all the sports leagues, flyers around town. So we've been getting the word out.
Thank you.
I was wondering, Deb, is the Waldorf School heavily involved in this too?
Very much so.
Good.
Very much so, because they don't want to move. And so they're very involved. And yeah, they're looking to stay there and to expand if possible. And then I think there are many other opportunities within those other buildings. I went on a tour with Ron, with Ryan Pinkerton and saw the vast amount of space there that actually was quite exciting to see the possibilities. And all of that will help the bottom line because you start renting that space, so, but that's in the future.
So since the, the initiative really hasn't been crafted, a consumer price index could be built in, factored in. Okay, good, 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 because we've been stuck in that position before.
Yeah, and we don't want to make that mistake, so.
It's a reality.
We had to put together something for the pollster. And so she helped craft that based on the legal language that's necessary. But putting in, you know, an inflation piece would just be one more sentence to.
Everybody's used to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. I hope there's enough room at the community center Saturday.
We'll see.
We had a good crowd at Sunnyside the last time, so I'm, I'm projecting that we're gonna have a.
That's true, we had to go get lots of extra chairs.
Yeah, we did.
I hope so, there's a lot going on on Saturday, so we do have some competition, so we'll see.
Any further questions for Deborah? Well.
Just a comment, it's incredible just how quickly and powerfully organized this citizens initiative has been. And I just want to commend you for your efforts and like everyone involved in that, it's very impressive.
Thank you, I'm gonna just brag on Tom and some of the other people, Shauna Sullivan, Trish Bartel, very, very strong people, Kim Kimora, who are participating, Elizabeth Denny doing our social media, Ashley Cote with the Garden Club, bringing all of their talents together. It's made this really run very smoothly, I have to say.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank all of them for their, the work.
All right, does anyone else have any comments they want to add before I adjourn?
I just hope this old district doesn't get too cocky, knowing that, you know, hey, people of Los Sosos want this, so you better pony up the money. I, I am sure they, they negotiate in good faith.
I think some of them live here, probably, they know us.
Yeah, we have, we have plenty of school board members in town, so.
Good, good.
Do we need to do a proper, like, motion or was the direction staff all we needed?
We're just going with the direction to staff and the consensus.
Excellent.
Okay, thanks, everyone, for coming, I joined this meeting.